Councillor Palau. Remove the Council's seat to the 10th item number 2 and 3. For extra that our agenda for today, no objection? Here in the set, two items per the 10th. Madam OIC, can be... What's up, Mr. Alba?
Vice Mayor Jose Antonio Miguel White Perez.
Present.
Councillor Colonia G. Bahay.
Present.
Councillor Serino Birabo. Councillor Oscar Abolino. Councillor Kalon Yudhishison. Councillor Michelle Esse Bonderas. Councillor Rosel... Butenito O. Fonteleiras. Councillor Berna S. Birabo Rivera. Councillor Provela Aranoy. Councillor Dahlia M. De Leon. Councillor Alfred Felix P. De Castro. Councill... And L. Piro O. G. Bahay. E.P.S.K. Trilaverli D. Bername.
Eleven members respond to the call.
Eleven, ma'am.
Eleven members respond to the call and now verify the presence of all. You may now proceed to the meeting. Move on to the agenda.
Adoption of the journals and minutes of the SP regular session.
Hold up. Move on to the agenda.
Mister Chair, I move that the agenda for today... That's the conclusion of the... As I am busy, uh... I'm going to go there all the time.
Okay, we have, uh... Six assigned positions. It was removed by Councillor Castro. This is not... Second by Councillor Oscar Boling. Uh... For the move on to the day's agenda. Any objection? Here in the set, the chair is approved. Councillor Barry.
Adoption of the journals and minutes of the SP regular sessions held on August 25, 2020, and September 1, 2020.
Any motion, Councillor Segundera?
This is the deciding officer here for the adoption of the journal and minutes of the SP regular sessions held on August 25, 2020, and September 1, 2020.
It's removed by Councillor Segundera, seconded by Councillor Alba, Councillor De La, Councillor Montaldera, for the adoption of the journals and minutes of our regular session held on August 25, September 2020. Any amendments? Here in the set, journal and minutes are either adopted. Next item.
Privilege and question hour. Item number one, request for additional units of jeepne flying the Alaminos Mabini route.
Uh... Do you agree to this? Ano pa siya lumapit sa akin na jeepne operator or mga two weeks old jeep? Uh... Sabi niya, nagkakaproblema sila kasi para limang jeep lang daw 'yung bumabihahe ata Alaminos to mabining. So, nagkakaproblema sila sa una-una. Unang 'yung jeep sa mga patahero. Nagre-request 'yung mga patahero. And secondly, 'yung mga jeepne operators natin. Uh... Parang gusto nila magkaroon ng pangkapuhayan. So, we invited, uh... Our... Our guest today para siguro maturuan tayo na liwanagan sa nangyayari. At huwag na 'yung update kasi two weeks ago doon. And then ano kaya 'yung pwede magawa ng something 'yan para maprecomen sa LDF RD? So, give you a priority.
For the said item, we have Mr. Maximino Delacros, the supervising transportation regulation officer.
Mister Chair, I move that the...
It's removed by Councillor Doc, seconded by Councillor Boling and Councillor De La for the expansion of the rules. Sir Max? Thank you very much.
So, yun po lang, sir. No, yung... So, yun po lang po sa akin. Roster na po, sir. So, yun po lang, uh... Pwede ba kayo... Yung kasing... Parang nagre-request po ng tulong. Ano bang pwede... Ngayon pa kayo ma... Balat pa, clouder no, or update o ano nangyayari dun sa mga jeep natin sa Alaminos, sir?
Okay, sir. Kinuha din sila sa opisina. Ang group na yun, 'yung may bi... Biyahe po ng... Uh... Alaminos Mabini. Akda Joda. Ah, ak... Akda Joda.
Akda Joda.
Uh... Kasi last month po, uh... Kinuha din po namin lahat ang presidente. Na may... Uh... At eh na may jeepna nakoperet na Tagalaninos. So, ang lahat po sila is fifty-one.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one units po 'yung Tagalaninos. Out of two hundred... Out of two hundred... Fifty-one po 'yung Tagalaninos. Uh... Yun po ang nagre-requestan ko 'yung Akda Joda. Nasabi ko na rin po na isaman na dun sa rato namin, ganun sa isaman na lahat ng jeepna Tagalaninos.
Pero hindi po ba nagoperet niya? Kasi parang...
Uh... Sabi niya na lima lang work. Di ko sabani, wala pa ata. Tapos...
Wala pa.
Yung atno at saka suaro na din.
So, ano ba tayong study, sir, na kilal pa dapat ng magoperet para let's say... Ingress study sa LDF RD or something ganun? Um, wala po, hindi ka... Wala tayong... Kasi ang complete po, araw-araw daw po, pagka... Tapos ng work, trabaho, nagtakbuhan daw 'yung mga empleyato. Tapos siksikan sa jeep. Tapos siksikan na rin sa loob nun. Kasi nga kulang po 'yung merong permito operet. So, ano ba tayong parang... study po? Kilal patalaga, gano'n wala.
Ang pinaka takakulang po dun sa... Sa pinsal mini bus. Out of seven... Forty-four six. Bakit partap lulan ata 'yung dinigan yang special permit ang itibad? Kaya siksikan po yun.
Siya nga.
One half lang 'yung karga. Napikitakot po ng...
Bulo nga eh. So...
At saka 'yung seventy-one na... Ban na po natin. Isaman ata 'yung na specialing special permit out of line, out of line pa 'yung Alaminos banta. Ang rota po natin ang panis alaminos.
Councillor Alba.
Sir Max, uh... Pan mo lang... Sino ba 'yung... Wala po 'yung... Ano ba 'yung mag-aapply 'yung association dun sa Pilipinas?
Thirty-five hours.
Mag-aapply dun. Kung mag-aapply sila, magre-... Isa na kung sila 'yung feeling magpatada.
Yes, ma'am.
Pagkatapos, sila rin magsasabi kung sino 'yung mga yun o 'yung association na 'yung...
Yung thirty-five, sir. Kasi kung may...
Mag-aapply sila lahat. Lahat.
Hindi sila mag-aapply lahat. Yung yung si Pardian magtagal po nila, may titigil nilang... Oh, isla.
Kung sino 'yung mga... Ah, mag-...
Kung date po siguro 'yung mga papili.
Ano?
Kasi 'yung... Po namin, lahat daw ata sila nakaply ng special permit. Eh, may mga requirements na yun, siguro 'yung hindi nila mamit. Kaya... Hindi daw lumalangan si Dian.
Siyari, binigyan may private si... Claseke... Ah, si jeep operator, hindi na lumalangan si Dian.
Hindi po.
Ah, wala na. Wala siya sa report.
Yung one lang sa akin, yung... Uh... Yung speaker lang po. Yung... Magro-ruta ng Alaminos.
Yun lang po, yun lang.
Yung po natin.
So, wala silang obligasyon na magreport or sa tao kayo? Wala, wala. Wala. So, what about the regulations, sir? Kung mararami, ang bahay siya may problema. So, yung intipad dito.
Any questions? Ay, cobra. Councillor Alba.
Uh, sir Max, kung ano ba may tipa po, gusto mong bumabihahe, di pinikatang... Sino mo muri sa akin?
Impulsor po.
Impulsor?
Impulsor. Oo.
Sa bintang pa no... Malalaman din 'yung police to... Yung jeep po eh may permit na...
Kung 'yung impulser po natin, alam nila 'yung... Ay, yung presiso po 'yung... Patigil ng permit. Malalaman po nila. Kasi 'yung jeep po, may nakaladeto na... Civic na... Road. Yung ah, capacity. Nandun po sa... Nakasulat po sa side market. Kung hindi po alam ng impulsor yun, hindi nila ma-muri. Pero pag alam nila, feeling nilang masikalim.
Any questions? Other questions? Thank you, sir.
So, Sir Max, kaya for example, meron ba tayong direct vice LDF? Siyari, kung saan ay, nakalagutan ganun. Pero naka-... Hindi siya tayo, wala pa.
Ah, wala.
Well, since I'm... I lost time to me, want to try say... Um, pan... Eh, no, than it's... Pulling... Hundred island. And...
Banyak.
And plus, uh... And... And...
So, ban, rebar... Uh... Jeep, four door van.
Mister Chair, Councillor Segundera.
Ano na, Sir Max? At ako kulang sa requirement sa mga nag... Nakaply ng special permit.
Hindi ng pagkalam ko pagawa, kaya 'yung inaccord din ng...
Sir Max, nakikipag... Talaga, kulang 'yung... Mini minutes na... Nagplagay dun sa... Kaya pasasagin natin sila. Oo, paginang... Matulungan natin sila pagod.
Wala.
Yeah. Pero... Matulungan natin sila.
Siguro, daw po tayo na... Paki... Pero siya wala po namang miri... Eh, miri diba ng... Yung yung po na... Magmiri dito tayo ng... Additional.
Sa akin. Sa akin. Yung suggestion, yung jeepne. So, we can't allow na sila... Not to give a big deal. But it's... Eh, okay. Sabi niya eh, hindi kami na bigyan eh.
Wala kami sa ganito. Ganito.
Wala mo requirement. Kaya dun tayo, kapataon ito ng... Tapos, di daw... Dito, siguro na may... Unik, unik. Para makuluan.
Ano ba? Maghiri na lang tayo. Nagawa ng... Oh, hirin na lang.
Wawin natin nila man.
Sabay na natin 'yung try permit with... The CDC or next week. Pero... Under my nila, past yung pinangprobesyo nila eh. Pero at least ano, may action tayo para... At least ako, wala na talaga 'yung... Tayo rin ang ma-affect ng... Last ano, last comment, Councillor Alba.
Sir Max, sa... Sa tingin niyo, ano 'yung kulang na hindi nila ma... Maano? Makumplay? Na lahat ng...
Hindi ko po masasagot na gawa. Ay, kanata kulang po yun. Pagka kulang, hindi nila ma-comply 'yung requirement. Kasi bakit... May mga iban na bigyan, may...
Yung po, uh... Thank you very much, Sir Max. Maraming salamat, sir. Maraming marami.
So... Under the expansion of the rules, shall we proceed to... Councillor Segundera, please, shall we proceed to item number one, the proposed resolution. Madam, thank you very much, and you need the...
Resolution conforming the appointment of Mrs. Elizabeth P. Radog, Assistant Social Welfare and Development Officer, Office of the City Social Welfare and Development of the City of Alaminos, Pampas, 2020.
Shall we defer the said, uh... Shall we... Can we... Uh, we would like to acknowledge, uh, Mrs. Elizabeth P. Radog. Uh, Ma'am, would you like to say a few words in the...
Magbubutangan?
Please say a few words, sir. In the short.
Pagandang napo po sa lahat. At ako'y napapasalamat po ako sa bigyan na ito. At ako po ay unabigyan ng isiwala na kasi be... Dindang head ng City Social Welfare and Development. And I hope na 'yung sa aking kakayahan ay hindi ko mayo ma... Madidisappoint. I will give my full service. At alam ko naman dapat ang puso ng isang tao, yung apsi be, ay wala akong pamamadid. So, muli maraming salamat, sir.
Okay, uh, any questions from the... Our council, any additional words? And beyond, well, the same way, Ma'am, uh, we congratulate you, Sir Max, and, uh... We hope that our partnership with the SAWD must not... Pati iba'y tanatik at matulungan niya reto kami sa mga constituents na... At matulungan din kami tele, sa mga programs. And, uh, we are excited to... Thank you, Ma'am, congratulations. Congrats. So, under expansion of the rules, we proceed to item number two.
Resolution approving the additional partial list of specific projects funded out of the 20% development fund amounting to 1,386,844 pesos and 69 centavos. Special education fund amounting to 124,024 pesos and 69 centavos. And the special photos appropriation amounting to 691,454 pesos and 81 cents avos of the City of Alaminos for calendar year 2020.
Uh, Madam OIC, I also read, assigned business number one, since we have the...
Under the assigned business, number one, item number one, resolution approving the additional partial list of specific projects funded out of the 20% development fund amounting to 2,785,097 pesos and 47 cents avos and the special education fund amounting to 357,102 pesos of the City of Alaminos for calendar year 2020.
Uh, if you have questions, we have the engineer's welcome, Ma'am. Uh... Any questions ba tayo regarding this? Sir, sir, dito, pero ginamasahe para... Okay, mga tawag lang sila. May tawag po ba tayo? Ay, dalawo ba? Isay, isay. Isay, isay. Yan, sir, yan. Yan po. Ediri na lang po. Ito po 'yung... Ito lang po muna. Sa... Muli lang po na din. Masahay, kasi masahay lang naramdito. Any... Ma'am? So, nakalagay naman dito, so... Meron ba tayong tawag sa ating magbuting engineer regarding the said item? Wala naman, sir. May subangsa dyan. Oh, thank you. Okay, uh, thank you very much. Ediri the welcome, pero may isak ka na, sir. Hindi na... Kesa solut na. So, salamat na maraming, sir. So, maraming salamat po. Okay po, sige, sir. Malamang sa pagbuting. Pagda... Waram, tawag, ano ba? So... Ano pa bang yan? So, we will now reach the expansion of the rules. So... Item number one, the proposed resolution, what is the... Where is the body? Councillor Dahlia De Leon. Shall we...
This is the day.
This is the day. Uh, shall we include the business of the day?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, this is the open of the...
Removed by Councillor Dahlia De Leon, seconded by Councillor Rabo, Master Segundera, for the... For to include the said resolution in the business of the day for deliberation. Okay, no objection? Here in the set, the resolution is included in the... Item number two, under proposed resolution.
Miss Mister Chair, we have all, uh... Association, the... The association I would...
It's removed by Councillor, uh... Shall we... It's removed by Councillor Segundera, seconded by Councillor, uh, I... To include the said item in the business of the day for deliberation. Uh, what do we do with, uh, regarding the jeepnees? Ba't na tayo? Sige para makita ng...
Ah, problem nila. Diba sila, sila mismo?
Dama, dama. Diba sila?
Yung... Yung... You know? Stick? Stick? Baka... Yung... Kredit dito eh.
Friday? Yan sa Friday?
Oo, lang.
Ala pa. Monday para Tuesday, max na namin.
Oo. Monday.
Oh, sige. Councillor Alba. Ten person on, um... Transportation, most to... Partak sa committee hearing on, uh... September 14, Monday, per ang lahat ng morning. Please invite... The three jeepne... Associations. Kasama ba natin 'yung minimum, yun? Jeep lang mo na? Jeep na lang mo na? Three, three jeepne root operations. Uh, and our representative on the executive. Ang siguro sa poso na rin. TNT na rin, oh? Parang alam na rin nila.
LT O kaya?
Po.
LT O.
LT O. Ano 'yung pasang na yun?
Si ano, 'yung fixer o 'yung...
Yung XPD, yung mukulay.
Pero kapal yun. LT, Marbi, and then LT, kuya.
Highway patrol.
Highway patrol group. Wala, LT O, wala? Poso, TNT. Local jeepne representative, tyaka 'yung patrol group po. So... September 14, 10 a.m. Sabay na natin 'yung pricing. Iba pa, next time. So... If we see now to assign business, Madam OIC, can you reach the second assigned business? Ah, first, uh, first, first assigned.
Under an assigned business, item number one, resolution approve... Approving the additional partial list of the specific projects funded out to 20% development fund amounting to 2,785,097 pesos and 47 cents avos and the special education fund amounting to 357,402 pesos of the City of Alaminos fund for calendar year 2020.
Shall we... Uh, Senator for second reading, the next Secretary De Leon. Kasi 'yung assigned na una, 'yung partialist lang, pero kung napun na dumating, tsaka balang... Eh, ito rin napag-usapan dati na... Nulubok po rin. Na... So, I suggest na defer mo natin. Ah, Senator, for second reading.
Senator, na... General. I hope that the, uh, mission of the talit that possibly be going out.
Removed by Councillor Segundera, seconded by Councillor Segundera to... Senator for second reading, the resolution of the additional partial list under assigned business number one. Sir, assigned number two.
Number two, review of Arangai, adjusting annual and supplemental budgets 2020 of the following barangays indicating the details of the...
Okay na lang. Okay na lang.
Barangay, iniraman, balayan, vilpat, nasa isay, sabi natin, ulat, at sanga, dang, world, kitwa, and...
In terms of, uh, higher support committee here, we are in charge for... September 14 at 9:30.
Okay, uh, we need Chair of Finance, schedule sa committee hearing on September 14. How long is it?
9:30 po.
I enter you in the morning.
Ordinance providing for revised bicycle pair matrix in times of declared public emergencies and/or any instance of declared community quarant.
Councillor Alba, uh, Alba. Seventeen na lang. Uh, next time na to. Next week. Yung mga ano kasi, uh... Yung current pair matrix natin, sinuspend natin. So technically, walang regulation kahit patano ang signil ng president driver. Legal. Eh, I think meron naman tayong preliminary na usapan noon, kung magkano'y babayaran. Idanagin na natin sa papel. So... Ano bang gusto natin? Gausapin natin 'yung mga presidente o si Sir Max na lang ang usapin natin? Ano ba 'yung bagay na? Siya nagkuwan ng proposal. Ganun. Wala, wala, wala. So... Maghiri ka na o hingi mo tayo ng trap saan nila? Trap mo na saan?
Ano bang... Paligala, ano ba to? Uh, imitado.
Ano bang ticket niyo? Kasi nagre-rental iba na taas po eh. Ano bang ticket na yun?
Hindi, 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 iba yun po eh. Yung... Tapos lang, tapos lang.
Wala, dito pa pa, next year yun. Ang puti, kumanta 'yung hapon eh.
May, 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 rin 'yung panasay talaga ngayon, eh. Run.
Deferr na natin. Wag mo na, wala. Pero okay naman na ngayon, wala tayong coordinates. Wala lang, parang...
At may malang naman eh. Wala magkumplete eh. Wala sumakay, wala naman babayad. Tapos, gumata ka na.
Sa... Sa... Sa...
Siguro, uh... I'll tell mo na natin to, pero magpaguwan tayo ng proposal saan nila. Para at least anytime na kailangan natin, naka... So, Councillor Alba would like to architecet ordinance and, uh... Uh... Painting the... Final draft and the written, uh, final proposal from our transport section to the revised bicycle pair matrix, the times of public emergencies and for... Next item.
Item number four, an ordinance downgrading to positions, abolishing three positions, creating four positions, and changing one position title under the legislative department of the local government unit Alaminos City.
Councillor Dahlia De Leon.
Yes, Mister Chair. Uh, I hope so calendar for also...
So, Councillor Dahlia De Leon, moves to schedule... To hide the... The... Originance for second reading and next second session, any second. Seconded by Councillor Alba, Councillor Alba, Councillor De La, Councillor Segundera. Any objection? Here in the set, ordinance is calendar for second reading and next second session. Sorry, this is the... May mga team, just lang saan na natin. Stopting. Next item.
Item number five, resolution requesting that interagency task force, IATF, to include children aged blank in the list of allowable tools to visit the Hundred Islands National Park, providing strict compliance to health and safety protocols.
Councillor De Leon.
Yes, uh... We come up here for, uh, the most legislation regarding the IATF release the age, uh... restrictions, uh, HI and VCs first, but allow that children as soon as it's... It's every island.
Hmm. What is the... So, how does it work? Councilor Seesaw, moves to schedule, calendar, the same resolution, the next regular session. Pending the, the, what is the same resolution? Any second, seconded by Councilor, the Councilor, the Councilor, the order. Um, next item.
Item number six, communication received from Ira Polines Radoz, President of Division Federation of Supreme Student Government, regardless of requests for legislative measures pertaining to R. 9211 or the Tobago Regulation Act of 2012.
So, how may I see, would you like to read a paragraph? Uh, so basically, may isa pong... As it could be nago, sumulat siya, sa, biningis ang mga policies regarding, uh, tabaho regulation. So... Siguro sa committee chair, before, wala sa committee chair, you want to start it pa or hearing na nay? Hearing kayo, pangausap na siya. Ano ang usapin na siya? Okay, Councilor Raoul Batai?
Usapin na siya, Mr. Chair, and we have already the ordinance regarding hundreds of forty. Year 2002, 2018, meron na siya, uh, thirty-four, and oh, fifty-eight, nakatapos sa two thousand. So, itong religiously...
Meron na?
Meron na. Meron na. Siguro, uh, kaya na rin natin siya na ka, sa ordinance of forty. Pwede po natin, uh, yeah, create an ordinance for this year.
Okay. So, shall we delete the same, uh? Father, Raoul Batai, the Chair, man, help, third person of help, moves to delete the same, uh, item in our agenda and month and hour, secret period to per year. Miss Radoz, uh, the policies that we have, the legislative measures that we have regarding, uh, tabaho regulation. And, uh, siguro, revisit natin 'yung mga ordinances na 'yun, kung may kailangan na pa. Any second, pop, seconded by Councilor, Raoul Batai, move to adopt. Uh, any objections? Remind, the same item is deleted and, uh, the same actions have to be followed on the legislative hour. Next item.
Under committee report, item number one, joint committee report from the meeting held on August 25 regarding resolution authorizing city mayor Art. Ryan Sixeleste to enter into a minimum of development agreement agreed by him between the local government unit Alaminos City Pangasinan and the Information Technology Business Solutions, ITBS Corporation for the implementation of smart Alaminos City's mobile app.
Would like to read, uh... Councilor Prote, the night? Would like to read, uh... Uh, no, our, uh, committee report, mixila, mixila pa rin. Happy cosa, you can see, uh, Councilor Josita Forte, the, is more of a... Happy kayo, yes, sir. Oyan, happy, happy sana, happy. Councilor Josita Forte, the night, would like to read the first two paragraphs?
Hey, and bank committee, uh, hearing was, uh, on August 25, 2020. Present were the representative from the city, several officials, office, CTC, and the representative from, uh, Information Technology Business Solutions. Uh, in the course of hearing, a member of the committee informed the, according to their ITBS on account of any request, can't provide information of any person with criminal case. That's us, uh, assessing, requiring it, uh, was answered by the opponent, the negative on base. It answered the application of Republic Act number 10173, known as the Data Privacy Act of 2012. The opponent stated, however, that although the ITBS cannot pernise the information to request it to account to the growing, growing under the act. They have access to such information since they are, uh, slams.
Councilor Prote, the night? Run, run, adyan mo nga, lalaki. Dyo, dyo pa na? The ITBS.
The ID number, number 400569, equal to 2105, requiring a maintenance and safety record of all inhabitants of barangays as its regular. The opponent, ITBS, offered to the city its own, own smart city ecosystem which would assist, would win towards solutions. With, with, uh, division activities through our division of market learning, marketing, marketing, which is organized and blocks it, it's all. So, meaning the opposition has innovative functions for the human life, learning, and property. Moving, thus, allowing it to be informed, protected, and protected, and this. You will be about finding the committee here by note to the, the, the committee report on the, 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 may be needed in the, in the, in the, of course.
Siguro, the Councilor, the night, seconded by Councilor, the, 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 uh... Councilor, for the resolution of the same item, the legislative board. Next item.
Item number two, joint committee report from the public meeting held on August 26 regarding an ordinance strengthening the barangay council for the protection of children of all barangays, of all barangays in the City of Alaminos Pangasinan by providing incentives, incentives to the institutionalization of the most young, friendly barangay award.
Father, here.
Uh, the policy was the master, less of the strategies, like, like, in terms of work. They would then be able to be as a duty of the officer, the authority in values. They can learn the rules under the guiding bodies and also members of the different areas. The committee has emphasized for you to strengthen each council for its protection of the rights and the promotion of welfare of children, the care respect barangays. The caring of such is necessary to enhance their efficiency, confidence, and responsibility to barangay. Establish a sustainable mechanism to, to continually drive barangays to better, create, sustain, and future improvement. Nobody programs, protect, and promote these. This is Dr. Maria Saluditi, has been born upon the bid search for the most outstanding health friend in barangay award. If this is extended for a good time, it's also being intended for the search most conducted by all barangays. Since the onslaught of the event. Here is the review of the 5 year of for the second award shown before barangay, which accumulated the highest number of points in each area or chapter. Thus each barangay will publish with copies of the year one to the last ordinance. In view of the law findings, the committee hereby books the latter's supporting court and the measure may be scheduled for second reading by the legislature.
Move by the, uh, when the ordinance come on, come on, come on. How can I, um, do this?
Will again, uh, the, uh, the first price.
The draft, uh.
The draft, uh.
The draft.
One thousand, what's the first, second, what, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Councillor, Councillor. Darol, this one moves for the adoption of this report and the said ordinance is scheduled for secondary reading. Any objection? Given the said item needs me, calendar for secondary reading, there is no objection. Next item.
Item number three, joint committee report from the public meeting held on August twenty-sixth regarding an ordinance institutionalizing a comprehensive program for children with special needs, C F N, granting financial assistance and providing funds to their poor.
Councillor.
The committee was conducted by office officers, like, for their perspective of the association. On that, the rocking D I L, the budget officer, Mr. Melo, and the moderator. Corrections to the proposed are as follows, under section six. Set of seventy years old, must be forty years old and below and have special needs. Under section eight, insert the word as a, in the need of applying, and in the section nine, add the word uh, as a subcommittee, and the decision of the protection of children. As a special, the council suggested all corrections incorporated to the draft ordinance. In view of the law findings, the committee hereby books for the adoption of this supporting court. The subject proposed ordinance is scheduled for secondary reading by the legislature.
It's removed by councillor Tisa. Second by councillor Dibender for the adoption of this report. And the said ordinance is scheduled for secondary reading and next regular session. Next item.
Item number four, joint committee report from the meeting held on August twenty-eighth regarding the view of barangay ordinance twenty nineteen dash one of barangay Makatiu entitled barangay revenue code of barangay Makatiu, Alaminos City Pangasinan.
Mister Chair, uh, the committee was, the committee really was conducted with the best of its abilities. And, uh, it was from barangay, uh, uh, uh. The chair told the country and the few alumnus of their partner. The committee was considered for just how much it was, uh, 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 uh. Free city, talking after the, uh, confirmed then the promise of the barangay, uh, 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 uh.